Welcome, everyone. I call the September 3rd, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Welcome back, everyone, from our summer break. And for all you parents, happy get-back-to-school time. So, the main purpose of tonight's meeting is to conduct a study session on the urban forest plan update. Before we move on to agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our hybrid meeting format. City of Bothell is providing the option to attend this meeting either in person or remotely via Zoom. Those participating via Zoom, the chat and question functions are not available to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. We have a public comment agenda item at the beginning of the meeting. Please limit all comments to three minutes. Please note that the City of Bothell does not tolerate verbal harassment. Please remember this during your comments. Also, as this is election season, I'd like to remind everyone certain campaign-related restrictions regarding public comment on campaigns and/or ballot measures. Public speakers generally cannot specifically address a campaign or ballot measure at a public meeting or during the public comment period. RCW 42.17A.555 prohibits government agencies from allowing the use of public facilities directly or indirectly for campaign purposes. Allowing speakers to speak in favor of or in opposition to a ballot measure or campaign during a public meeting or during a public comment period would violate this prohibition. Public comment will be allowed both in-person and via Zoom. Those wishing to comment via Zoom were asked to submit an online form by 3:00 PM today. People wishing to submit written comments were also asked to submit these comments by 3:00 PM. Email was encouraged as well and will be acknowledged. Those in attendance may also make comments and have been asked to indicate their desire to speak on the sign-in sheets. The Imagine Bothell notice, city website, and tonight's agenda all provide an information to the public for providing comments. Video of this meeting will be streamed live, as well as recorded, and available later for viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone or to listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers, during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so that everyone can follow along. At this point, we'll take a moment to recognize the attendance of the commissioners. Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Westerbeck?
Here.
Commissioner Lever?
Here.
Commissioner Robson?
Here.
We see you. Hello? Commissioner Sills is absent.
Here, hello.
Commissioner Robson, Commissioner Sills is absent and excused. Commissioner Gustafson?
Here, thanks.
In addition, staff in attendance include Deputy Community Director Gates, attending remotely, and Cameron Colvin, Planner, Community Development. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off, as there is a delay. For commissioners, at the breaks in the presentation, I'll be calling our members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, please indicate this by raising your hand. I will call on you as I see you. This will help to avoid the problem of having two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, second a motion, or participate in debate. Please mute your microphone when not speaking. First item on the agenda is public comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing, as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. I do not see anyone in the audience. Do we have anyone on Zoom wishing to participate? I believe not, and there were no written comments received. So with that, we will move on from public comment period. Next up is the approval of the July 16 minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Commissioner Westerbeck here. I move to approve the minutes as written.
Okay, there are second.
Commissioner Jones, second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes as written. Any discussion around those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, please indicate aye.
Aye.
The minutes of the July 16 meeting are approved as written. Next up is a study session regarding the urban forest management plan. We have Senior Planner Colvin here to lead us through that, so take it away.
Thank you very much. Good evening, commissioners. So, I know it's been a long summer. So, a bit of a recap. At our last meeting in May on the urban forestry plan, we shared out some preliminary data and maps from the tree canopy assessment and street tree inventories that were completed earlier this year. And talking through some of the initial findings and key takeaways from those, we began a little bit of the discussion about potential policy directions based on that information. But tonight will really be an opportunity to dig into that a little bit further. So I'm joined tonight by Matt Piccone, who's a Senior Landscape Architect and Project Manager with Greenworks. They are part of our consulting team with Planet Geo working on this project. So we'll be recapping a little bit of the information that y'all heard earlier this year and kind of resetting the stage for the discussion tonight, providing a high-level overview of the various dynamics at play that influence Bothell's tree canopy. And then going through kind of potential directions for what we should prioritize over the next month and the next month or two, so we're set up for success to deliver a complete draft for review in October. So with that, I am going to hand it over to Matt to kick things off with the presentation.
Thanks, Cameron. Let me know when you can see my screen.
Yep, we can see it.
Good, all right. You can hear me clearly. All right, great. So like Cameron said, we are working closely with Planet Geo, who has done the analysis part and inventory. And we are starting to work together on having the conversations with Cameron and city staff, you know, prepping for some public engagements with some key stakeholders and an open house in the future to understand priorities. But like you said, we're going to check in with you all on direction and look at some opportunities and understand where we want to head with this. So, so we have been talking with a bunch of cities in the region around this idea of value. You know, we think about trees. A lot of people think about, you know, things that make it look nice, beautify the city, great to be outside. But we really want to expand how people, from city officials to the general public, think about nature in cities and really think about all the value that it can create for your community and put it through the lens of that. And so, you know, you might be familiar with City of Ecosystem Services, but the idea that that nature is doing work for humans. And you know, and if nature was gone, if one of these things were to be done, we'd have to replace it with other infrastructure. And so, we're really kind of working with communities to figure out what the narrative is and language is around how nature can start to be treated as infrastructure. And because it's doing all these things, it's providing habitat, it's reducing erosion, it's improving your water quality, it's reducing heat island, it's contributing to mental and physical health of your community members, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The list goes on. And so, we really want to start the conversation by talking about value and recognizing kind of the holistic approach that nature and specifically the tree canopy is providing you as a community. So that being said, with a few asterisks and caveats, Planet Geo has access to a database called iTree. And this is a nationally-recognized database that values different functions of the tree canopy and puts dollar amounts to them. And so, from stormwater benefits to air quality, to carbon sequestration and storage, you know, there's a lot that the tree canopy is doing. And as a very rough estimate and a very underestimate, which does not include things like health benefits or energy savings for buildings or anything like that, Bothell's tree canopy is estimated to be about $12 million a year. And so, we like to just put that up as comparison versus maybe the amount of maintenance costs or, you know, FTEs that are in charge of that and compare it again to a type of infrastructure. Obviously, there's a lot of variation in these calculations, you know, especially around stormwater and things like species and location and context. And this is looking at the city as a whole, what's going on, not like necessarily individual trees in specific locations. So, but the crux of the matter is that most of these millions of dollars of benefits are being performed by your healthy, mature, large trees. And so, that's something to keep in mind when we talk about trade-offs. We talk about mitigation versus retention. You know, not to say that mitigation is bad, mitigation is great. It's thinking about future value and future function. And so, you just want to balance, you know, function today, function 10 years from now, function 50 years from now. So, we worked together to do a couple surveys. So, we surveyed city staff and then we surveyed the general public and put together some highlights. And the kind of summary here is there was a good amount of consensus between staff and the public. And that's going to generally require public and private partnerships and commitments. There's, you know, fair consensus around, you know, maintaining or increasing the tree canopy, improving habitat value, you know, finding ways to reduce conflicts in urban areas like street trees. Very common complaints, obstacles, challenges, you know, about tree root damage or debris or hazards, visibility clearances, stuff like that. But we also asked about value. And it's like, why do you value trees? Like, why do you want to have more trees in your community? And so, these were the top three things that, you know, the community said, which is provide shade and reduce heat impacts, number one. Number two, habitat for wildlife. And number three, make it nicer to walk around, which is, you know, being walking around your urban areas, your commercial areas, you know, taking advantage of those nice days and the character that it brings to your town. And then, some opportunities around, you know, infilling on public lands, especially around your stream corridors, your open spaces, your trails. Again, pretty solid general consensus there. Making sure that goals across city departments were all on the same page. And again, we had a, we just had an internal staff focus group where we chatted with people across the department. It was great, and they wanted to do it again. They're like, well, yeah, we should find where there are maybe some inconsistencies and meet and make sure that we're all working together on this. Education and clear guidance, especially to private landowners when it comes to street tree maintenance. So there's clear expectations and your staff isn't spending time taking care of things reactively when they should have been, you know, proactively managed by private property. And then find a way to incentivize private property tree retention from development. So, what drives change over time? So as part of the analysis, you may or may not remember that, as well as assessing your current canopy, citywide, Planet Geo also compared it to eight years ago and tracked the change over time and was able to slice and dice and understand changes by land ownership, by zoning, by all kinds of different parameters. And so, we wanted to understand what's driving the change, how can we get ahead of it? How can you anticipate it and maybe adjust some things to mitigate losses? So here's a overall distribution as a kind of a pure map on the right, showing tree canopy and a more diagrammatic map on the left that shows density of trees and kind of where they're designated. Another thing to mention about those benefits, you know, from heat island reduction to stormwater management is, and then this sounds very obvious, they only work locally, right? And so, if you start to see, like, a percentage coverage is not a percentage coverage, is not a percentage coverage, right? Like, if you concentrate 50% of your trees, but they're all in one area, the rest of your city is not going to see those benefits. And so, it's really important not only to think about overall coverage, but the distribution of that coverage and to recognize, you know, making sure that all members of the community are seeing those benefits across the city and you can't just rely on removing from private property and putting back on public property. So, like I said, there was a change analysis going on, which is a net decrease of 1.4% over the last eight years, primarily on the private property. The darker brown areas are in those, you know, residential medium areas. No surprises here. Development's happening, housing's happening. Development, not bad. You need housing, you need to grow, you need an economy, you need jobs. And so, how do we balance those needs with the right strategies for tree retention without causing too much conflict, right? And so, so this is what has happened in the last eight years. And then some things to note that are significant that have happened recently with the comprehensive plan update, the middle housing ordinance. And something to keep in mind is the removal of parking minimums, which could be kind of a diamond in the rough here and a really great opportunity for some future infill, which we'll talk about. So, you know, obviously, to increase your canopy or even retain your canopy, you have to reduce your losses and amplify your gains. Some things to consider in all of this, all the parts and pieces from development, like we talked about. Climate change is, should not be a stranger in these lands. You know, from extreme weather events to droughts to pests and diseases, we are seeing a significant loss of tree species in the Pacific Northwest, and that will likely continue. And then again, that idea of distribution equity, you know, focusing on local solutions and local canopy for everyone. Also, when considering gains, you know, obviously, you can take advantage of as much public property, city-owned, other public-owned properties as you can. But as you'll see in the next few slides, public land is a very small percentage of the overall city as far as footprint goes. And then, obviously, you can also, you know, pull your carrots and sticks with incentives and requirements through your development codes. But you don't want to overreach and put rules in place that inhibits development and causes too much conflict. So, I'm a nerd, and hopefully, some of you are too. And we created a math equation that lays out kind of where you're at. What are the things that contribute to losses? What are the things that can contribute to gains and retention? And maybe that will help to kind of frame the picture around what the long-term goal could be. And so, we're not doing this to complete some major master algorithm. We don't have the analysis to put numbers to all of these things. However, we want to use this to identify what are the key leverage points that you can take advantage of in your community? What's going to make the biggest impact, so it's going to raise the bar across the board? And so, we put some numbers to it that we had from the analysis. And asterisk, asterisk, this is percent of both your total city land area and urban growth boundary that was kind of determined as the project's boundary, that all the analysis was framed to. So you might be familiar with a 44%, which is your city. And then, including the urban growth boundary is 41%. And that's where all these detailed numbers are. So, we wanted to keep it consistent in that frame of reference with these other numbers. So if your current canopy is 41%, private removal and development contributed to a loss of 1.6% in that whole urban growth boundary area. Your public lands, from the potential planting area analysis that Planet Geo did, your public lands can only contribute back 1.3% of growth of the canopy in that same frame of reference. Street trees is a little more at 1.8. And then, overall, the existing canopy has grown on public and private conservation at 0.4% growth in the past eight years. And so, the idea of making sure you are maintaining the health of your existing trees, because they're going to continue to grow over time as well, as well as all the new trees that have been planted. Again, the new street trees that have come in, or I know there's been a recent planting project along the highway corridors, a lot of those are not being picked up in these canopy analysis because they're so small. And so, it's really important to spend the resources to maintain those and make sure they survive because they're your future canopy, right? And so, taking care of those trees is super critical so that they can contribute to that growth over time. So, other things that contribute to loss, like we've mentioned, extreme weather events, trep, pests, and disease, succession plan removals, hazards and clearances, things that have been identified as unhealthy or invasive trees that we recommend to remove. And then, obviously, private removal that will continue as things develop. Other things that can, that you want to make sure when you are adding new trees, we've kind of discussed like kind of quality over quantity. Make sure you do it in a way that will allow that tree to grow into a useful, mature tree and not die out in eight to 10 years. And so, looking at soil volumes and other things that will allow the health of those trees, especially in harsher urban environments, to survive is super important. The other thing that's not picked up, and we're going to touch on a few times in that potential planting area assessment, is current impervious surface. And so, all your streets, all the parking lots that exist are not a part of this and are a bonus. And that, I think, is a really great opportunity, especially with the parking minimum removals, to maybe find some additional potential planting area to address things like heat island effect, et cetera. Other really key existing canopy ideas is thinking about that retention percentage and maybe applying some overlays in some anticipated redevelopment areas, establishing a heritage tree program, so trees at a certain size that are doing the most work are valued extra and maybe a permitting system that very limits their ability to be removed or the mitigation requirements to really make up for their loss. And then finding ways to increase your maintenance capacity so that you can maintain the health of the trees you have. Okay. So this kind of breaks down the land ownership. Like I mentioned, the city owns 3% of the land area, and that's including, again, the urban growth boundary. Other public, 6%, road or utility is 18%, private conservation, 8%, and private, 65%. Two-thirds of your land is private property. And so, there are different solutions for improving tree canopy on public property versus private property. And there are different leverage points and different appetites for, you know, the carrots and sticks that you would impose on the private property. And then, this is just to show, you know, that again, the idea of public mitigation, it still should be a top priority. It's available to you. There's lots of benefits of infilling trees on, you know, stream corridors and trails and parks. But just back to that idea of, you know, distribution, this is a zoning map overlaid with all of your public lands. And I don't know how big your screen is in the room and how clear it is. But there's all these light green areas that you can see on there, and that is your potential infill land. And so, it's really important, from a public perspective, public land. So it's really important, again, to see if you're going to be anticipating a lot of redevelopment and canopy loss in some of these zones. The ability to infill back on public lands and the distance that they will be from those developments and just kind of considering the trade-offs of what that's doing for you citywide and then kind of locally. Okay. So, prioritizing recommendations through goals and values. And so, we wanted to look at the approaches and the recommendations through this lens of why the community values trees. And again, they are valued for their shade, they're valued for their habitat, and they make it nicer and beautify your city. And so, the goal is something else that we want to maybe kind of workshop a little bit. Both staff and the community have this idea of wanting to, you know, be maintained or increased over time. And so, we just need to be very strategic about maybe where it's increased or kind of the, how far you want to go in, you know, your infill programs and your commitments for all these leverage points that we've been talking about. But we still want to kind of recognize the value that resilient canopy can bring you and make sure that it is equally distributed and balancing that with new development. Does it make sense to pause here? I've been talking a lot. Do we want to do questions at the end, Cameron? Or do you want to kind of pause and see before we dive into like the policy stuff?
Yeah, we can take a brief pause here and just, if there's any questions or comments before we dive into the next section.
Commissioners, anything on what you've heard thus far? All right. Let's finish it up and hold our questions. Thank you.
All right, sounds good. That was just me trying to take a water break as well. So, so here we go. So, goal number one, you know, again, looking at, is there an opportunity to increase or maintain the citywide canopy coverage? And so, what are all the challenges that go into that? And how can we approach that holistically as a city? And so, identifying the challenges, you know, 68% of the tree canopy is on low and medium residential property and 75% of the total potential planting area identified is on low and medium residential property. And many of those properties are exempt currently from retention rules, lots under 20,000 square feet. And so, that kind of frames up that is, as your code is written now and as everything written now, it would take a large volunteer effort to get everyone on board and really maximize the potential of the potential planting area and keep that canopy going as other development comes in and removes existing canopy. Right now, retention policies are relative to the existing canopy on that property by DBH, by the diameter of the tree. And so, and I think it's irrelevant to the size of the property. And so, you can have a one-acre property that's redeveloping and can have, you know, a couple trees on it with, you know, varying size diameter, and I think it's like 20%. Or that whole lot can be completely covered with trees, and it's still 20%. And so, I think there can be some adjustments there to how that's written to make sure that maybe there's a coverage requirement or some sort of goals around total DBH or total coverage versus it being relative to what's currently there. And then identifying that the future development's likely happening in those, maybe within midtown neighborhoods. So, there's a couple opportunities, like I mentioned before, heritage tree program, a tree removal permit. You know, there was some discussion about just the general benefits of, you know, intentional removal, allowing that to filter through the heritage tree program, and just tracking the data. You know, having applications to track what's been removed, how big it was, if there was any replacement is, could be beneficial long-term to understand how the canopy is changing, you know, on the ground basis versus, you know, from a really high-level basis. Especially because the inventory that was done as part of this project was public trees. And so, this allows- That was done as part of this project was public trees, and so this allows you to start collecting data from a private tree basis. You know, incentivizing tree retention on private property. That's certainly going to be a discussion point this evening is is what does what do those incentives look like? What is palatable, what's beneficial? Typical things would be FAR bonuses or setback reductions. Other cities would would alleviate parking requirements, but that lever has already been pulled. And so, you know, what are the, what's the appetite there? What are you willing to? Push and pull as far as, you know, height, building heights or volumes to allow for more nature, right? And then, like I mentioned, total DBH required by zone or by neighborhood or by by size of property. Rather than just a relative to what was there right now. So there are a couple of themes that were discussed, one is again, long term quality over quantity. Not only is that going to give you better long term value and health of your trees, it's going to reduce. The maintenance burden on the public and on your staff so they can focus on other higher important things. Rather than constantly maintaining poorly installed or unhealthy trees. Focus on areas of impact. It's all well and good if, you know, some farmland on the outer skirts of town want to participate in in increasing the canopy. But that's not going to be the most impactful from a benefit standpoint, it's really, you know, finding ways to infill. Where there's air pollution, where there's storm, more impervious surfaces, where there's heat island, you know, issues. Not, yeah, both both are good, some are more impactful, and so where do you want to spend your energy and resources? You know, pulling the right lever. And then there's, you know, other opportunities going on, we'll talk about today. We're trying to sync up with other departments, especially your climate action plan. And you're redoing some street sections, and so there's there's a lot of other opportunities that coordination across departments can really. Benefit this effort, this isn't just an effort of one department, it's just not the responsibility of parks or. Development or anything like that, like there could be trees everywhere, right? There could be trees in your street sections. There can be trees in a lot of these things that a lot of departments have an effect on. Benefits trees are valued for their shade, so obviously current challenges are heat islands, especially roads and parking lots. Increased development from more roof coverage, et cetera, and mature tree loss. Excuse me, and then opportunities are increase your parking lot tree cover requirements. So even though you don't have minimums, you still give some requirements around how many trees per. How many stalls, that is, I would say average right now, it's a one tree for every ten stalls. I've definitely seen cities with every nine or every eight, you can certainly densify there. And then we can partner with street section updates, again, looking for opportunities to. Integrate with parking in the street sections, giving trees bigger space, wider areas. A little farther away from buildings, maybe take advantages of street medians. So you can you can fit those larger shade trees in, you can get away from the sidewalk, you can get it away from power lines and from blocking. You know, business signs or any other conflicts that come up from trees not being. Being too close to infrastructure, right? And so how can you rethink the street section? And I think there's already some good examples in Bothell already, and we'll talk about those. So other ideas for reducing heat island and and increasing shade, promoting. Existing parking lot infill, and so that goes to the the private property, the large swaths of of parking lots that do exist. You as a city has already recognized that maybe your land, your your lands are overparked. And so that definitely has an effect on new development and most new development is going to take that land and densify their building. To to increase density and and all that, but you have a bunch of existing lands that might not read necessarily redevelop when you structures. And is there an opportunity there to incentivize or promote them to do some infill into their large seas of asphalt? And at least get up to date with current codes or the revised code for tree density. So yeah, taking advantage of the parking minimums and. Again, those potential planting area calculations that were part of the the overall equation and analysis don't include any of those impervious surfaces. So those are all bonuses. Trees are valued for their habitat, some things that, you know, challenge that in urban, especially in urban environments are monocultures. Canopy segmentation, non-native species, climate change and disease. You currently for your downtown area actually require a single species. In your on your street trees, and so that might be a low hanging fruit to start thinking about some tree diversity. For both size and species and increase habitat value and and tree succession. The thing in the dash box is, we're we're talking with Cameron about some low hanging fruit, easy things. Easy changes that can happen. And maybe some really long plays that will benefit you as a city in the long term. And this is one of those, which is, right now, critical areas are generally defined as steep slopes. Or sensitive habitats or wetlands. But perhaps there is an effort that. Collaborates with the county or the state or other regulating bodies to start to define. You know, forest or cluster areas of of large contiguous trees also as critical area. And that would overlay some stricter mitigation and redevelopment. And preserve those larger tree canopy areas over time. And last but not least, trees make it nicer to walk around. But there's a lot of challenges around root damage, visibility concerns around signage, vehicular pedestrian clearances. And general capacity to perform all this preventative maintenance in in downtown areas. And then maintenance responsibilities are. Not always in alignment with with the property owners. And so again, rethinking the street sections. Increasing soil volumes in as a requirement for street trees. Refocusing maintenance efforts to reducing potential hazards or clearance issues so that. Maybe shift in the public perception if a lot of people are frustrated with the quality of condition. That could be a really, again, easy kind of public outreach and and PR of of removing all of these things that people are frustrated over. First, before you maybe do some some remote work. And then, you know, use this plan, use this plan in the process and and the open house to promote responsibilities. And see what people are lacking as far as resources or guidance or rules. To do a better job on maintaining. And this has been mentioned in a couple of the previous slides, but, you know, working on the right tree, right place document. That can provide some guidance on species selection, because a lot of times. People want to do the right thing, but they just don't know what it is, so they might just default to what they know. And so, you know, really helping. Create a transparent and clear guideline for species. And maybe even going so far as, and this would be another dashed box item long term. Reaching out to local nurseries to making sure that they're providing native and adaptive species. To promote that adaptability and resilient tree. Sourcing, because a lot of times it's hard to to source some of these things. And they default to kind of what the typical ornamentals are or the common things that might not be best for you in the long term. So looking at some of the street sections that you have around town, just looking at maybe some some opportunities for improvements. And really taking advantage, like we said about center medians, if you can, as you're redeveloping. You know, street improvements in different areas, because they're going to. Get you away from those power lines and allow for much larger shade over your impervious surfaces. But you have some good examples already, you know, about the way these parking strips getting trees away from the sidewalk. Dueling as as stormwater and and shade. And, you know, getting those away from power lines or cracking sidewalk pavements, et cetera. And then this is just a an example out there of. A local Oregon town that went through a similar effort. That showed the type of diversity that could happen in these kind of walkable commercial areas. With different size and species of tree that integrates with parking and pedestrian ways and furniture zones, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So this is one direction you could go to start to diversify your canopy and and get it integrated into your character. Apologies for the eye chart, but this is just an overview of kind of summarizing everything I said around. All these regulations and Planet Geo did a comparison to some of your neighboring communities. And what they do as far as all these ordinances and rules and kind of where Bothell's at. And then the the yellow boxes are things that you are not currently doing that we think you could pursue. And then the darker green ones are things you are doing, but could be updated or clarified and and provide some revision. To move you towards your goals. And then, again, this is kind of a overall summary of your current regulations and and where trees are regulated. With different types of rules from from right away trees, tree trees, to retention and protection, the parking lots. And so these are just some other catchall ideas around maybe hiring a city arborist for. Coordination purposes or overall urban forestry efforts as kind of an overall strategist. As compared to someone who's going to be just kind of boots in the ground doing the work. You know, increasing those parking lot. Canopy requirements or incentives. And I think most of these other ones are just kind of summarizing from the other documents that I showed. So next steps, obviously talking this all through with you. Drafting up recommendations as far as which things to pursue and and maybe how to adjust them. We will have a public focus group in the end of September. A staff focus group early October. And this might be late breaking with a flip flop, we're still working on the the public open house, which is happening October, we're trying to sync it up. With Arbor Day, we still have some coordination to do there. And then two planning, two additional planning commission meetings in October and November for updates. And then as far as adoption goes, a city council session in the mid-November before Thanksgiving break. And then hopefully adoption towards the end of the year, just to give you a general timeline. And in the meantime, we'll be kind of working in the background with city staff to coordinate some of those other efforts. Making those recommendations and preparing for the other engagement opportunities. And outlining kind of the the right tree, right place document. So I think that is it. Yeah, last slide, okay, that was a lot. Where do we want to go from here? I'm sure you have questions.
Well, thank you very much for that presentation, very informative, so I'll open it up to the commissioners, do you have questions or comments at this point? Commissioner Lever.
Thank you, Commissioner Lever over here, thank you, I echo that this was great and I'm very excited. My question is probably too soon to ask, but I'm really interested on sort of like the funding for these activities. Because when I think about what ends up being like the final recommendation. If it is my understanding that the grant of the five hundred thousand is what's allowing us to have this comprehensive plan, which is great. But I kind of wonder how much money there's going to be left after this process ends. And with costs rising and even like staffing shortages and all of that. I I just, I just wonder how is that incorporated in the planning process? And at which point, if at all, we'll be able to provide input in terms of what to prioritize based on how much it's going to cost.
Yeah, so we haven't, you know, run all the numbers for all the possibilities here. Like you mentioned, our our grant is what's enabling us to develop this plan. CD does have multiple positions, both within our long range department and then in other departments that. Are tangentially related to this work that are secured, you know, beyond this grant and supported through other funding mechanisms. Whether that be the general fund or. You know, impact fees or utility fees, things like that. So part of this work will continue beyond December. But there is definitely a need to increase funding to support city council's goal of, you know, maintaining and increasing our tree canopy. Developing a more robust planting program. To support a lot of these recommendations, and so we can definitely provide more details on. What those numbers might look like once we kind of hone in on, you know, which areas we want to focus on.
Other commissioners?
If I can, if I can add to that. Everybody, if you can hear me, okay?
Yes, coming in well.
You know, these are lofty goals and and future thinking, so, you know, establishing these strategies. We will use those across the city, across departments to to. Provide recommendations to council in in future budgets, future budget asks, depending on kind of where where we where we land. Where you land and where where city council lands on this approach, so.
Yeah, and and just to build on that, you know, we, like Christian said, you know, we. Were listening to your goals and we wanted to outline all the things that could make that possible. And, you know, we think that some of these things will, again, going back to the the first slide around value. It's an investment, you know, and I I think that, you know, hopefully some of these moves will. You know, increase in value over time, we like to say that that natural infrastructure is is. You know, trees are one of the only things that appreciate in value over time as far as infrastructure goes. And so, you know, it it is an investment in looking at the, you know, the long term maintenance issues. Or the succession of the canopy and anticipating even years ahead of of the types of things that are coming up. Having a plan like this can help you kind of anticipate and be proactive, which is usually a a third of the cost or less than being reactive. In some of those, some of those issues, and so. Yes, some of these practices have a a higher upfront costs and that's always a struggle with all cities. But we we do want to, again, shift the conversation to thinking about how do you continue to maintain that long term value? And and not be reactive.
Thank you, other commissioners, Mr. Westerbeck?
Commissioner Westerbeck, everybody knows I've got comments. This is fantastic, really great presentation, Matt, I appreciate it so much and you hit on a lot of really important material. Something I think about a lot is how. Other parts of the world, they've definitely thought about this and figured this out somewhat, they don't have necessarily the setback requirements we do and you've got that on your list, which is great. I've got some images from a friend did in a PowerPoint deck a while back. Comparing the typical sort of American development pattern, in this case, it's a shot, sky, sky, an aerial view of Ballard. With, you know, your typical setbacks and everything compared to a pretty typical development in Germany. Where they don't have the same side or front and rear setbacks as we do. So they can prioritize putting the the building right on the street edge like we allowed in downtown. And then they have no side setbacks and we just rely on the. And then they have no side setbacks and we just rely on the building code to deal with that. They've got plenty of information in there about how to do, do firewalls. And allows for this pattern you see all over Europe and Asia, many countries, South America. Where you can have a big tree backyard or a courtyard. So I'll pass this around. I've got a couple of copies of it, one big, one small, showing Dortmund, Germany and how much green space they can have in their development pattern. And we have just chosen not to, to adopt that development pattern because we prioritize setbacks. And they, setbacks have their uses and we all love them, but we should allow them to be relaxed, as it were, if we want to encourage tree, tree planting. And so you'll see that there's this huge, kind of like public courtyard inside these row houses and apartments. And we could allow that, especially in downtown or with our, with our new middle housing. And then I, because I do some development and I design projects for people. I often wish I could save some really magnificent trees. But our hand is sometimes tied because we're like, oh, would you factor in setbacks and lot coverage and everything? You end up having to take out like a beautiful cedar or fir tree or something because you have to put the house or the building in a certain spot. So I would love, 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 as someone who loves trees and I like to hike and everything too. And I know what they do for the environment. I even have an ecology undergrad, so, you know, I'm not just about killing trees and building buildings. Is, I would love to have the flexibility to put the buildings between the trees. And just, you know, leave that beautiful fir or cedar and be able to be a lot more creative with site design and not be hemmed in by our setbacks and lot coverages and things like that. And as we've discussed before and change codes around, as long as you can figure out the stormwater issues and things like that. Allow some creativity with the civil engineering. So I want to say that at least, that being able to be creative with how we use the, the entire site to not be, not be hemmed in by, by setbacks would be transformative for tree retention. And it also works hand in hand with building code. We're about to have a state building code appendix that's going to allow single stair. So it's going to allow the, the much more, much better use, I should say, of small lots. Where for middle housing and small apartments and the kind of the direction we're going in and our, in our building code and in our culture to utilize small lots better. That's going to make a, make a big difference. And it goes hand in hand with this, being able to use the lot more fully. Small elevators too, that's a much bigger lift for the legislature, but that will also facilitate that. And that's a kind of the sort, sort of thing they allow in Germany too, is, is smaller footprints. You know, we have sprinklers and things like that to make buildings safe. We have the technology. So that's really important. And then we have really what I would consider very suburban driveway and, and lot access requirements. I think typically it's like, we're like 24 feet for, for fire lanes, things like that. That's fine for a really huge site in the way we used to do apartments like in the eighties. But now some of these fire access requirements are, are huge, especially, again, they don't fit our small lot focus that we're moving towards as a society. So I think trying to maintain safety, fire safety, but think, rethink how big an access drive needs to be. For example, here in Bothell, we have, we emphasize a lot of two-way driveways. Have to be 20 feet wide minimum, I think not over 24, something like that. But in the city of Seattle, they often allow you only 10 feet for two, two lanes or for both two, two-way directional, directional use. Because they also want a smaller curb cut, which is nicer to pedestrians and walkers and bikers. And also creates more street parking. So there's things, things like that we could rethink because that'll actually save more trees too. And it's, and it's less, less heat island effect because we're creating less pavement. And so rethinking like, can we, can we have less paved areas, smaller driveways and still maintain safety? Maybe they have to put in a fire hydrant or something like that, but maybe that's $20,000. But they save more than that, not having to do a huge driveway and they can get extra units in or something like that, which we also need. It'd be nice to, as you talked about, Matt, some incentives, maybe if people can. Developers, for example, builders can keep trees beyond whatever the code requires. You know, if we'd have to create a table or a sliding scale or something, but you keep some significant trees of substantial size or DBH, whatever. And you can go an extra story or you can have extra units beyond what the zoning code typically allows or something. So we are rewarding people, as you've got in your slide deck, for saving those trees. So it's really saying, if we, kind of like you did with parking, if we really want to prioritize all these aspects of tree canopy and build it, we have to have, there's going to have to be some trade-offs. There's going to be some horse trading. And we're going to have to, I think, rethink how we develop and what our flexibility is going to be with public works and with engineering and with building code and everything. And I think there's a lot of opportunity there to, to, for, for everyone to win and to keep things safe and, and useful. And, you know, keep good engineering principles. I did want to mention, I've gone through the, the requirement to put in street trees a few times in the city and we have a list that we're allowed to use. And so there are different street trees all over the city. There's like, I don't know, you guys might remember better than me, there's like 20 of them or something like that, 15, 12? I can't remember. Peter, Peter gave me, whatever the city engineers gave me a list to use and so you can kind of choose. And so all it says, it says, they have to be the same. You have to kind of go digging around and you find this list. So I do want you to know we have some complexity or some, some variety in our trees beyond what the code says. It gives you some options. I love the idea of the parking lot infill and encouraging that. Spokane actually has a whole program where they have significant incentives for building housing, I think it's housing, on parking lots, existing parking lots. We might want to look at that because that's going to introduce housing entries. So Spokane's got a great program. And then last but not least, I know years ago, when my brother lived in Seattle, he got trees from the city. And they gave you, you know, trees, they, of course, species they, they want planted. And you could go get a, a quick kind of over the counter permit to, to plant trees in your parking strip, you know, as long as you have the space and they were okay with it. But it was a pretty, pretty easy process. And so I, you know, I just bought trees and there were street trees out here. And they were about 200 bucks a tree. So it's not, I think it's something the city could afford because I don't know how many people would take advantage of that. But I bet there are a lot of people who would probably love to plant some trees on their, their front right of way or on the edge of, edge of their street or something, as long as they, they knew the city sanctioned planting in those particular areas. Or we could even develop like, oh, all these streets, we'd really like to see more street trees and we have a program for you to, to get trees from the city. And we'll, we'll, we'll give you a pamphlet or a booklet on best practices for how to plant them and how we would like to see them planted and so forth. So that's all I have for now, but I really love what I see here and let's try and get that 1.4% that we lost back. And of course, goes without saying, you know, I think we should just take advantage as much as we can of, of planting in, in public spaces, street trees, more street trees, parks. Those places, there's kind of no downside there. Thank you.
Other commissioner comments? Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Gustafson? Mr. Gustafson?
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. Thank you for this presentation. My son enjoyed all the visual aids and graphics and maps in here. That was great. My question is about the policy to prevent root damage and encourage a healthy root network. I know we've spoken about it and I know it's going to be part of the plan, but I would love to get Matt's thoughts on what those specific policies might look like as we flush out more of the implementation.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we haven't listed them all out yet specifically, but there are some best practices we're seeing working with other public works departments. And first things first is making sure you have the right soil volumes, not shoving a, a large tree in a small space. Making sure there's enough room. And so one of the, one of the things we will be doing is relooking at your street tree lists and maybe assigning minimum volume or area, planting areas for those. We've also seen, you know, if you do want to go through the, the cost commitment, the idea of, I'm going to use the, the proprietary name instead of the generic name. But the, the idea of the Silva cells, which is a, an underground kind of infrastructural soil, infrastructure that allows root growth underneath sidewalks and spreading that around to really focus on drainage and, and root growth and health. So there's some, some implementation ideas and again, also working with the street section updates and making sure that there is kind of space or looking for opportunities for larger medians. It's, it's all kind of about right, right tree, right place, right? And so, you know, maybe you do, if you do have smaller, you know, sidewalks and you're looking infill, maybe there are a lot smaller species or even understory species, like some vine maples or something, you know, looking at more of the beautification part. And then you focus on those shade trees, shifting them out into those medians or other areas. So you can put kind of larger canopy trees in there. So it's, it's a, it's a preventative measure. It's not something that you're going to be able to easily mitigate existing conditions without, you know, replacing your sidewalk and cutting the roots and possibly damaging the health of the tree. And so it's, it's more of a best practice moving forward so that you can maybe eliminate or greatly reduce those conflicts, you know, 10, 20 years from now.
Yeah, thank you. This, this sounds great. I, my only thought is that this sounds very much geared towards public tree planting, which is super important. And it would be wonderful if all these great pieces of infrastructure could somehow be applied to best practices for private development. But this is really, really exciting. Thank you for those. I think there are six things that I counted that are going to be helpful.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you. This is Commissioner Jones. I want to also echo what my colleagues have said. This was an extremely thorough presentation, thorough report, materials, just a lot of work has gone into this. I had a, I guess I have a comment and then a, a couple of questions. And so the comment is that this seems to, I was really happy that Matt pointed out the impacts that climate change is going to have on our tree canopy. And this seems to be an area where we can build in climate adaptation. We talked before about how the Climate Action Plan really emphasizes mitigation, not adaptation. And so I would just encourage the city to think about really strengthening that piece of it as you look at potential policy and programs moving forward in terms of the urban tree canopy. In terms of questions, it's a similar question, just two different areas. There's a chart in the materials that we received that showed prioritization for planting based on some socioeconomic criteria. But I wasn't sure how that fit in. It didn't seem like, it didn't seem to be a recommendation. It seemed to be some information for us to look at. So one, I wanted to find out about that. But the real question is, in terms of prioritization for new plantings, for areas where we need to go in and do something different, some, do, do more. Do you, are, will you be providing recommendations based on things like the health of the current tree canopy? The vulnerability of communities, communities who don't have as much tree canopy in their area. And they are on the lower socioeconomic scale or things like that. So are some of those recommendations coming and will they be factored in?
I mean, Cameron, jump in. I, I didn't have anything as part of this presentation, but maybe you're referring to the previous analysis package that you received? Yeah, so I can talk to that a little bit. So what Planet Geo did with that map, the prioritization map that you saw in there with the varying blue coloration. Yeah, so that looked at a couple of different things that you mentioned. So lack of existing tree cover and then various demographic data, including low income, socioeconomics, education. Yeah, Matt's got it pulled up here, that were all factored in to kind of prioritize census blocks. And so we can use that as a tool in combination with the possible planting area maps that were generated as well to really hone in on, okay, here's where we have land available to plant trees. And here are the top priorities where we can improve tree canopy equity.
Yeah, and just about, yeah, just to, A, reemphasize that this isn't the final answer. This is kind of using those basic demographics. But we will look at other things like what we talked about earlier, like, well, you're going to see more, you know, development in areas around downtown and that May, you know, Mayfield area or Maywood area and Midtown and stuff like that. And so how does that influence, you know, the emphasis on planting back and prioritizing? And so those, those types of things that are, that are local to your community, I think need to, to be, you know, assessed and, and laid over these kind of more general, you know, demographic and other statistics that apply across to all communities, right?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Jones again. Yes, I assume that this wasn't the final map. And I just, you're getting at what I'm trying to find more information about. How will, maybe I'll reframe it. I would think that in terms of coming up with a prioritization of which areas to plant when, with a schedule and how to incentivize particular areas, you're going to have to do a lot of trade-offs between different things. And that's the kind of, making decisions on those trade-offs. I would think you would want feedback from us. I think you'd be, want feedback from your focus groups. I think you'd want feedback at the open house. So that, I think it will be important to bring that type of information to some of these settings. So you could see what the local community prioritizes. And of course, you're going to have to be careful that you have good representation of these different groups at those meetings. So I was curious as to the plan to do that. I know I, we saw the schedule and we saw some open houses and things like that. But, but even in this presentation, which is, has tons of information. We don't, we haven't got to that point yet. At least it doesn't seem as if we've got, we've reached a prioritization point yet.
Yeah, that'll be forthcoming a little bit. So we're trying to hone in on kind of drilling down what the recommendations will be. And then workshopping that at the, the public focus groups to really drill down those at a, at a finer level. But in terms of like a, a very detailed planting plan necessarily. I don't know if that level of detail will be the deliverable from this project. This is really going to guide us more in terms of policy directions, high level, you know, direction moving forward.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Jones. Yeah, I totally get that, just given the nature of the private versus the public and, and where some of these plantings will happen. I would, I would offer, and just something to think about, that, that even coming up with conceptually what that might look like, some sort of prioritization, might influence the type of programs and policies you want to put in place. So as an example, if in fact things lined up and really a high priority area for planting is a location where you know those private homeowners aren't going to be able to afford trees. Well, the program you might prioritize or the policy you might prioritize would be incentive programs, would be perhaps buying trees for people to use, would be those types of programs. So it sort of depends, right, a little bit? And so I, I, I would just encourage you to think about that in addition to all of the benchmarking and the really great information that you're getting from your consultants as well. Especially in light of what the local community thinks the trade-offs might be.
Yeah, great point. Thank you.
Commissioner Lever?
Commissioner Lever here. So I want to echo Commissioner Jones's comments and sort of go back to the process component. So when we provide feedback on whether or not we have thoughts or, or recommendations, what's presented to us. I think at this point, I've seen it's very complicated to really get really detailed. And then again, is like, we need the recommendation to then get to the detail, right? Because they're limited resources. But as we are preparing for really like honing in on what the plan will be, I keep on going back to how can we leverage technology to make sure that we can almost kind of try to do two things at the same time, which I get it is very complicated. Like this is very, very complex information to process. And at the end of the day, if it doesn't seem to impact me, then it's like, I, I can't even provide input. And as we're going to different, to the public again, or even like employees, really kind of really thinking of how can we make these static maps like really more interactive to really better, better understand what is happening. And then with all the different functions that the city And then with all the different, um, functions that the city has, and then you mentioned it earlier around there are different departments that already work in this type of work. Maybe help us understand what that really looks like and then where there's already that coordination and that staffing so that when we provide our input, we really have an understanding of what that methodology for, uh, ranking and or, uh, developing the implementation looks like. So that the feedback that we can provide is really in, more informed. Uh, cause I think we provide, we come from different angles here. We provide the feedback at different angles. And I think it will be super helpful to have almost kind of that, um, ma- matrix of really understanding how we're landing to the recommendations. And then really thinking of ways in which this information can be available to people and the, the private owners in particular, to really see how this impacts you. Cause again, I, I really think sometimes it's just like, oh, this is not for me and therefore I don't really wanna support it and, or I really wanna, um, push for something that may not be feasible. So process wise, I really, um, welcome the opportunity to learn more about how technology can be leveraged. And even when I think about the, I think it was higher in one FTE, which I know that's kinda really thinking down the road. I, I definitely this is an investment and what are some of the things that AI can do to really help you? I guess, uh, do all the, the math and all the things that need to happen behind the scenes in a more, um, expedite way because I think we're in a very good point to really provide this information in a way that can be digested easier for the different audiences. So, thank you.
Other commissioners? I've got a few comments and I'll start with my nitpick, cause I always have one. Um, I was really surprised in Attachment Two where it talked about different species that arborvitae was shown as a, a good species. I think I've seen more dead arborvitae in the last few years, just with the increased heat and dryness than, than anything. So I'm just kinda surprised that showed as a rope. I'm looking at the chart now, the highest as far as relative performance index. Uh, it's on page forty-nine of the packet. It's page nine of Attachment Two. It's a little line, uh, and I think I even saw something from, uh, Councilmember Alder's discouraging the use of arborvitae cause they're very dry on the inside and they burn really fast and really hot. So surprised me. But to, to get a little more broad, I think we can look at something and I, there are kinda pieces of this out there, but something like an adopted tree program. You know, we have adopted drain, we have adopt, you know, whatever, adopt a street. And if you have a a tree in the public right of way, um, provide the adjacent landowner some resources. Uh, what tree type should they have? Uh, maintenance recommendations, maybe even recognition, some resources, you know, hey, here are a list of some arborists if you need them. You know, you don't have to do a search and wonder, just look at some ways to make it easier for people to do that. So that's a thought I had and kinda in conclusion, I wanna thank, uh, you Cameron and Matt for, for this presentation. Very informative, uh, very interesting. Uh, I really appreciate that you identified that there's a balance here. And I think it's important that we always tell people that there are balances when we make choices. We need more housing. That can impact trees. Now, uh, Commissioner Westerbeck said there are ways to minimize that, but mitigate that, but still there are impacts. And then also recognize loosening the parking minimums could be one of the ways to mitigate that. So always letting people know that there are multiple factors here and we need to be conscious when we make choices. There are pluses and minuses. There are very few things that are a hundred percent, uh, wonderful without any negative side. So I, I thank you for identifying that and for the presentation generally. So unless there are any other comments on this one?
Well, we'll. Matt, did you wanna dig into any of the other slides in more detail or talk through anything else?
Sure. Yeah, we can, um, we can review some of the other opportunities. Um, obviously you all had some, some great thoughts initially, um, but maybe, I don't know if we have time to dig into each one of these, but, um, I think the, the ones in the kinda bold, uh, boxes are ones that, um, maybe are worth some feedback or discussion. You already, um, gave some, some, uh, rave reviews for the potential around setback reductions and F A R bonuses. Um, what, what do you feel like? I guess, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't live in Buffalo. Um, I don't understand the politics. I don't understand the community as much as you do. Would you, would it be feasible to do, um, a, a code or a regulation or incentive by zone or even by neighborhood? Uh, or, or like what's the, the appetite for something like that? Could you say, um, you know, uh, eh, you anticipate losses in certain areas and therefore you're going to incentivize just this area to plant trees and not someone else? Like is that, like, how would that go? Or is that worth, I mean, that might be worth, uh, to the previous commission's point, that that might be a discussion in the open house?
We, uh, real quick, I was just gonna say we, you know, we do have our sub-area code structure. Um, and a lot of those are focused on our growth centers, which kind of align with where we have the most impervious surface cover. Um, so we do kinda have that structure in place already to some degree.
This is Commissioner Jones. I was just gonna say that I, I do think workshopping, uh, something like that is a great idea. Um, because I don't know that I could sit here and, and say what the city thinks, uh, in terms of that. But I think it is something that's worth it. I think you'll, you'll wanna make sure that there's, um, you know, some evidence, like there's a strategy behind a, a recommendation like that. And where is the evidence and the data coming from for, for making those decisions? But yeah, I think it'd be interesting to hear what the city thinks.
I think maybe, potentially, it could mitigate some of the concerns we hear about growth. Because one of the things you hear is about removal of trees. And if you can tell people, well, there, you know, there is an impact, but within the same general area, there'll also be efforts to offset that impact. I think that'd be a great thing to be able to say.
Commissioner Westerbeck? I agree with, with the, the other two commissioners that I couldn't say right now and it, it should be workshopped, I would think. Um, but I will say, like a lot of things we've discussed over the, the months and years here, um, developing a sort of, um, à la carte list that maybe could be adapted to those different sub areas. Like there might be a different list you offer for downtown. Like maybe we do really allow people a lot of flexibility to, um, in, in the, the most dense areas that in our new development regulations, um, including, uh, some of the residential areas that got upzoned, um, that we say, you know, we really wanna set the table for some creative lot use. If it means you get to save some significant trees, so we're gonna really give you a, 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 a robust list of options that you can try. And then as we get out into the, the medium and, and lower density areas in the, in the code, we say, your list is shorter, but we wanna incentivize because you have more land or more right of way, whatever, these planting programs. So I could see us adapting to those sub area zones, but also just giving people options. People love to have options. Like, oh, look, I've got like a list of six things I could try, you know? Or developers can come in and say, gosh, you know, just like an affordable housing incentive or something. Hey, if I, if I keep that massive cedar tree, they're gonna let, you know, reduce the setback over here, kinda like we did with our middle housing code where we said you could have increased, um, or reduce setbacks and, and some increased development area if you kept significant trees and stuff. I think expanding that idea is really good. So I would love to see us develop some, some lists that would be workshopped with the public and do they like it? Would they use it? Does this, it's just throwing, you know, good ideas out there that no one's going to use or not. So, uh, I like that idea of being developed, those being developed over time. So you don't, uh, just say, here's, here's your option, take it or leave it. So here are a few options that you could try and what worked for you.
Yeah, and I think there's opportunities and, and, uh, we'll be kinda brainstorming a little bit with Cameron and, and related staff on this is thinking beyond the tree. Uh, obviously this scope of this plan is the urban tree canopy. Um, but going back to those benefits, you know, if you can't increase shade cover, maybe you think about other ways to reduce heat islands, like reflective roofing, for example. Put on my old architect hat. Um, and so like, you know, are there trade-off? Does, does that, or à la carte list go beyond the tree and really think through that lens of benefits, functions, um, to the community, to the environment? Um, and, and provide even, you know, additional incentive and, and we only can think about, you know, for our plant trees. Uh, but you know, those other partnership opportunities with other efforts, I think go a long way, especially I think you're at a really good time.
Commissioner Lever?
Um, Commissioner Lever here saying, yes, I, I agree with really being that, um, having those options is great. And I really kind of wanna emphasize on the targeted outreach when it comes to getting the input because one of the things that we know we struggle with is we have these traditional ways of trying to reach to the, our audience. And then we don't hear from the people who might get impacted. And then we try to push, uh, or move with a recommendation and then until a project is in my backyard, then it's when it becomes an issue. So I really, um, encourage you to really look at the data that you have. It's so robust and it's so wonderful and really try to use your resources in a way that can help you target those neighborhoods or those blocks. And, and, and again, like, I, I think about leveraging technology or the partnerships that you have so that we can go beyond the open house because we've already know that the open house, you might get some of the same voices. And I just wanna offer, um, an example of all that education piece that is gonna be really needed through this process, uh, to really help us, um, get to the finish line. I, as I shared before, like I live right next to North Creek Forest and I recently found out that my property line is actually beyond my, uh, fence. So there are all these beautiful trees that I didn't know were part of my property. And as I was, you know, working on, um, our little backyard, I'm not a gardener that's, you know, I'm trying to get there, but I'm not quite there yet. So anyway, long story short, I was like, oh, so this is our property. Maybe we need to really start thinking of how we can, you know, really take care of it. And again, it's like those trade-offs is like, well, why don't you, and again, you know, people will say, well, just work on your backyard first. And I'm thinking like, well, I mean, the value of all these trees. But again, where to even begin? And then for people to really understand what it means to maintain those trees is, I mean, we, we have a lot of learning to do here. And I really hope that as part of the engagement process, we can use all the data that you do have to really rethink about ways in which we can workshop these ideas with the people who will be helping us implement them and support our efforts here. Thank you.
Other commissioners? Other comments? I see you scrolling.
I'm just scrolling to, to see if any of these things, uh, cause it was a lot of information. Uh, it's a very complex issue. Um, and so I'm just going back to some of these slides to see if any of those triggers. Uh, additional thoughts, ideas, um, definitely gonna be working with Cameron on, um, simplifying, uh, some of this stuff for public consumption uh, as we plan, uh, the kinda more, uh, uh, public focus groups and open houses, um, having it be graphic based. Uh, likely using a lot more of those maps that Planet Geo, um, generated, et cetera.
Well, I, you know, you do have the street sections there bolded. I think that is an important one. We did some work not too long ago about the bicycle plan and we talked about separation. And I think there are some opportunities there. So that's definitely one that I'd like to see us keep in mind. I see nodding heads. Okay. All right. Hey, see a lot of silence. So I think, uh, you know, we do look forward to seeing this come back, uh, when you do have the workshop scheduled, let us know. And I'm sure we'll make every effort to, to attend. Um, so any closing thoughts from anyone or shall we move on?
Um, yeah, I was just gonna say, um, thanks for all the feedback tonight. Um, so I'll be working with Matt and our consulting team. Uh, I feel like, you know, what we heard today is we really need to take this information and list and refine it a bit, uh, based on the conversation tonight, really simplify things, um, like Matt was saying, so that uh, is a little more easily digestible, um, to, to make decisions, uh, inform decisions going forward. Um, so we'll make sure to follow up with some additional information between now and our next meeting and, uh, where we go from here. But, thank you.
All right. Thank you again for a very informative, uh, presentation. So moving.
Thanks, all.
Okay, thank you. Moving forward, reports from members, uh, after our summer vacation. Do we have something, Commissioner Lever?
Yes, I have an exciting news. So I just recently joined the Board of, uh, Directors for Casqueria College Foundation. So I'm really excited to be more involved in the community. And of course, I don't foresee any, um, conflict of interest since it's kinda like that fundraising arm of the college. But of course, if there's anything that were to come to the planning commission, I will recuse myself if need be. But, uh, my term starts this fall and I'm really excited. So.
Congratulations. Very nice. Other, other reports from members? I, I think it was a very nice summer in Buffalo, a lot of action on Main Street. Uh, a lot of times I saw a lot of people out there. So it was very nice to see uh, the space being used and we'd look forward to these things continuing. So seeing no other reports, reports from staff? Anything for us?
Uh, evening everybody. Uh, from staff, I just wanna say we've got a couple of public, uh, events coming up. So there's, you know, the sustainamania, which I believe is on September twentieth coming up. Uh, we'll have staff there. There are other engagement events that are better going forward. Uh, one with the development community, uh, talking about affordable housing, kind of working through M F T updates and the, the very, the very initial stages there. Um, some of that work will feed into the projects that we'll, we'll be bringing before you this fall. Um, and then just a, a, a brief sort of update, the September seventeenth meeting is, is gonna be pretty full with items. They're a varying scale, however, so we are gonna scale out the discussions accordingly. Um, we'll be talking about an update on the Climate Action Plan where we are, uh, which is, you know, getting towards the end of the, end of the line, end of the finish line. Uh, next steps on critical area ordinance update, uh, Boyd with Public Works, uh, will be providing an update on the transportation impact fee, uh, project. Uh, and then just some, some initial more briefings. Uh, so these will be pretty light touches. Uh, on the comp plan annual update, there's a couple little tweaks in there, uh, along with some miscellaneous codes that we're just gonna clean up and, and, and tighten up that we've, we found just through the day-to-day work. And then, uh, an initial, an initial look at, uh, middle housing update, uh, based on direction from city council as well as uh, stepping into, uh, inclusionary zoning, affordable housing requirement updates. So looking forward to, uh, a busy meeting. We'll, we'll look to get that packet out as early as we can, knowing there's gonna be a bit of material in there, but we're gonna try to keep it as clear and concise as, as possible for the, for the commission.
All right. Thank you. So you eased us in with a lighter agenda, but I hear you saying come in rested and well-read for the next one, cause we're gonna have a long one. So we'll look, all right. Well, thank you. So completed our agenda, uh, there being no further business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Commissioner Lever, motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Commissioner Gustafson, I second that. Thank you.
Moved in second. It all in favor?
Bye.
Bye. The meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-nine. Our next meeting will be September seventeenth. See you all then.